The place of faith and religion in Australian life can be a puzzling topic. Although we're still quite a religious nation, the number of Australians with no religious affiliation at all is growing. And on the other hand, young people are proving far more likely to hold to religious beliefs than baby boomers. And most, the majority of Australians, think that religion should be a private matter. We welcome you to the Co-creatives Town Hall meeting on faith in the public square, where we're hoping to unpack some of these complexities. Our guests this evening represent a number of faith groups here in Australia, and we're very, very pleased to welcome. So first here to my left is Swami Atma Shenanda from the Brisbane chapter of the Vendetta Centre of Sydney. Welcome to you. The very Reverend Dr Peter Cat, Dean of St John's Cathedral here in Brisbane. And Gail Parats, who has many hats. She is the Chair of the Queensland Faith Community...
Faith Council.
Faith Communities Council.
Faith Communities Council. She's also the Chair of the Interfaith Group of the Queensland Jewish Board of Deputies, and also the Vice President of the National Council of Jewish Women's Associations. So wealth of experience and knowledge among all our guests. So I guess I'd like to start on a positive note. And it's a question for each of you. What do you think are some of the more important, significant, enriching elements that religion and faith have to offer Australia? I'll start with you, Swami.
Good evening, and thank you, Janice, for this invitation. We are living in an era of globalisation. I am reminded of an example by James Campbell about the different religions. He says, "The different religions are like the different programmes in the computer. You need the Office programme, you need the Adobe Acrobat programme, and you need other programmes as well. Each one has got its own unique nature, its own unique utility." Similarly, every religion has something or the other to offer to this bouquet of this world. Hence, I feel that today, religion is not just a faith or a belief. It is a way of life of all people, not only of one religion or the other, but of all people. You cannot separate religion from the everyday, day-to-day life of human beings. Therefore, religion definitely plays a great part in the understanding of a human being as such. It's not only the human beings, but also our connection with... First comes our connection with the divine. Next comes our connections with the world around us, and then our connection within ourselves. The Vedanta philosophy talks about this, discovering our true selves. Do it either by work, or by worship, or by psychic control, or by any kind of action. But the ideal is to become free, to become one with the Maker. So in that sense, religion has become universal. It's not just confined to a few individuals or a few groups. One can always mix and match the elements of each other. That's my feeling.
Thank you. Peter, what would you?
I think the real gift of religion to our current cultural malaise really is that all of the religions invite us to develop a communitarian ethic. So we live in a culture that says, "You have to be an individual and you actually are not connected with anything." And then we have this wonderful gift of religion that says, "Well, actually, you're related to everything that is." And that gives rise to a communitarian ethic that we actually have to work out how to live with one another. And for humans, that's a challenge because we also like to compete with one another. So we have this tension going on of wanting to be part of community at the same time as actually wanting to defeat each other. And I think religion at its best resources us to walk in the middle of that tension. So the golden rule, which is your love, your neighborage, yourself will do unto others as they would do unto you. Various manifestations of that actually invite us to walk into that space and negotiate that space, which is a complex space, which is where spirituality comes in. Because it's not just a matter of having rules, it's a matter of actually developing a heart and being transformed and formed. And so I think that is, in terms of religion overall, I think that's the gift.
Gail?
I'd like to start off by saying, unlike my colleagues up here, I'm not a trained theologian in any sense of it.
You keep saying this, Gail, but I think you are a theologian.
And so I'm representing myself, although I am a member of the Jewish community here in Brisbane. To me, the greatest gift I think that religion gives us is a sense of belonging. And I think it's very important in today's world, more so, I think, than in the past. It's immensely important to feel that you belong to something, to someone. And I think religion or faith gives you an added dimension that perhaps the secular world can't provide. You can live without faith, you can live without love, you can live without life, but faith gives you that added dimension to make your world more whole. And I know with our community here in Brisbane, it's a small community, but we feel very connected. I've travelled overseas, and I've been to conferences of Jewish people. And I haven't known a stop, and there've been 300 people in the room. And I haven't felt at all nervous walking in, simply because I feel connected to them in a way. I think you understand that from your own faith groups. You just feel a connection, and it makes life more meaningful because it extends you. It helps you recognise if you aren't the centre of the universe, that there are powers that be that are greater than you.
So I want to then turn to a difficult, challenging question when it comes to the question of faith and religion in Australian public life. And it's the question of trust and distrust. So if I could turn your minds back to, I don't know if you recall last year the ABC and the University of Melbourne did a very large survey of Australia. Australia Speaks, almost 55,000 people participated. And they did glean a lot of answers around the place of faith and religion in Australia. And one of the, I'm not going to say it's shocking, but one of the important results of one of the questions was around the distrust of religious leaders. So religious leaders were distrusted by a full 70% of the population. And that included almost 70% that said they were religious, and 35% saying they did not trust them at all. I think we have a sense that there is an erosion of trust for... And I think this is probably perhaps not equal across all religious groups. So I'd be interested to hear what you have to say about that. But the question is, can trust be regained in our landscape here in Australia? And what would that take? What would that look like?
It is a difficult question, no doubt. From my experience, I feel that most of the people who do not trust the so-called organised religion or the organised religious people, at the same breath, they claim that they are spiritual. This is where the dichotomy happens. In reality, faith, religion, and spirituality are like the technology and the science. The science is spirituality, and technology is religion. That is, applied science is technology. While people do not want to adhere to any kind of label called religion, there is within every one of them this inner urge to become spiritual. It should be our task as religious leaders to impress upon these people that spirituality and religion are not alien to each other. That while you are spiritual, it's not necessarily that you should conform to a particular religion or a particular practice. But at the same time, you can take the values that religion gives to you. That is where we as religious leaders have to play a significant role. And I am sure that after all this has happened, the COVID situation and all that, there will be a surge in the seekers. They will come back to the fold. I am somehow very optimistic about that.
That's a great question. I think trust can be restored, but it will depend on how we go about engaging in the public square. I think we've eroded trust because of the way we have engaged in the public square. So speaking probably as representative of the religion that has probably the least amount of trust attached to the moment because of Royal Commission or something like. As I understand where Christianity should be, it should be a voice that comes from the margins. But we have enjoyed being at the centre. And so our relationship to the public square has been basically the idea that we are going to occupy the square. So we are going to not engage in the public square in the past. We haven't engaged so much in the public square, but rather we have walked into the square, occupied it, put up walls around it, put tick gates at the entrance, checked people off, and have sought to be the people who control what goes on in the square. So we have tried to be the moral police. We have done exactly the opposite to what our founder did in terms of how we engaged with people. And so we have developed this passion for control and dominance, which means that then we fail, and we betray people, and we don't look after the very people we should be looking after. So if we retreat to the margins, which is where I hope we end up, really, even though I operate a big building and all those sort of stuff, with all the civic stuff that goes with it, I still think there's an opportunity, and I can see that opportunity developing, particularly in inner-city churches, where it's becoming a place where the marginal find a home. And then our role is to give the marginal a voice and to speak from the edge of the square to those who want to occupy the centre. And I think that's where trust will be restored. The challenge for us at the moment is that we also have a very significant movement, Christianity particularly, which you could call Christian right, who are determined to retake the square and actually fortify it, and are working on some really clever ways of ensuring that they have control of the square. So they're very strategic in where they claim territory. They've taken... So we have, in the state and other parts of Australia, we have the situation where those people have worked out that if they can control the political, at least one of the political parties, they will get a lot of power. And they dictate to the rest of the population how they are to behave. If we retreat to the margins and restore trust, we're just going to become a place that doesn't have a vested interest.
I wonder, Gail, for you, obviously Jewish community doesn't hold the same space of power, authority, public voice, it's a very different context. You're a leader in the Jewish community in lots of different modes. Do you experience the same levels of... You know, my sense is when many Australians say they distrust religious leaders, they're predominantly probably thinking of the denominations of Christianity. What's your experience as a Jewish leader or to the wider Australian community as well?
Yeah, I was going to say that we're set up so differently to the larger church groups. We don't have the hierarchies, we don't have the archdiocese, we don't have that level of governorship where synagogues are basically little bastions of democracy in that, you know, every community gets together and sets up a synagogue and decides how it's going to be run and what direction it's going to take, whether it's going to be ultra-orthodox or it's going to be orthodox, and all the various streams of Jews. So, and we do have a controlling body in the major cities called the Beth Dine, where certain matters can be taken to the Beth Dine for solving or for reconciling. But it's certainly not the same setup as in the major religious groups. So we don't... Yeah. I was just also thinking that generally society is very cynical. I think people are very cynical about all levels of government, lawyers, car dealers. I mean, teachers even don't, and they should have a good reputation, but even teachers have a very poor, you know, standing in the community. I just think people generally are very harsh and very hard on those that put their hands up to them. Certainly, the larger institutions, as we know from the Royal Commission, are to blame for a lot of misery and suffering, and there's no excusing that. And those lighter institutions, I'm sure, are making every attempt, or hopeful that they're making every attempt to change their modus. But in the Jewish community, I don't see that mistrust because basically we are very similar. We don't have the hierarchy, so I could be living in a simple world, I don't know. But I just, we don't seem to have... I'm not saying that bad things don't happen within Jewish communities. In any closed community, yes, bad things will happen. I'm not saying, you know, we're perfect, we're not perfect. I know in our more closed Jewish communities, the ones, the sects, I call them sects or cults, the ultra-orthodox, they have a lot to answer for. Any closed community can go astray. So, you know, within the general Jewish population.
So again, for all of you, and I'm aware these are playing out in different contexts, but back to the question of faith in the public square, the kind of topics that are talked about, spoken into from faith leaders, there seems like there's a number of challenges. One is these results and these surveys that continue to tell us most Australians think faith should be a private matter. There is a reluctance for it to enter into the public space. And the other is what is communicated by religious leaders. So I think Peter already pointed to forms of religious right, Christianity influenced, and even now we know funded by American political pacts, this kind of thing. On the broad scale, we've seen, and I don't know if any of you saw, there was a, in The Guardian on the weekend, a YouGov report that came out that showed, for example, that most Queensland churchgoers, so this is Christianity, support voluntary assisted dying. And that this was completely out of step with what most Christian leaders say. We saw a similar thing across religious organisations when we were discussing marriage equality. What we get in the public square from religious leaders is often not representative of the nuance within the religion itself, and sometimes even out of step with what the majority of church or faith adherents in any religious groups. So again, a situation where leaders are likely to be dismissed or not trust. And I wonder how do we address that situation? Is there room in our public discourse for a much more nuanced conversation about the religious groups we belong to? Open to any of you who want to?
Well, certainly within faith communities, nuanced conversation happens. The challenge is how do we have any nuanced conversation in the public square where we're restricted to a couple of hundred characters? We have to have a little video with a bit of text going. So how do we actually enter into a more dialogical space about life? So I've been part of several conversations about voluntary assisted dying. And the ones that I've been a part of, once you give people the opportunity to explore the issue, then people can see the complexities of the issue as well. They might still have, they might still say, "I believe this or no." But by engaging in a dialogue, then we can actually deal with some of the hidden complexities, some of the issues that don't get explored. And one of the problems I have is that often we are funnelled into... Like even asking people that question, "Are you a favourer or not?" is not conducive to people actually being able to express the full gait of how they actually would approach the issue. If you ask people 100 questions about it, "Do you believe that this would be okay?" and sort of unpack the subtleties of it, at the end of the day, people would actually end up being quite confused, which I think is the place where we need to be. I think we need to be able to say, "I really don't know." Let's talk about it all. Because we have these issues come at us, and we're expected to make up our mind in a hurry without any information other than what Facebook or Twitter has, or your commercial radio has just planted before us, or some dogmatic statement by a religious leader. And all of that is just totally unhelpful. So I think one of the things that we're certainly trying to add to the public square is actually opening up dialogical spaces where people can explore issues. So the very fact that we're doing this is actually part of that gift, is that we actually need the opportunity for people to get together and have conversations so that the public square becomes a place where the public can actually exercise a dialogical habit. And we don't have it. We have shouting matches. And in church, we're still learning how to do dialogue. This way, certainly our church have had a sort of parliamentary system for a long time, modelled on the English system. And you go to a synagogue until last year, and we did sort of open space which was dialogical. People, you had to put up a proposal, and then the only legitimate way to engage with that was to speak for or against it. Technically, you're out of order and you're asked a question. Technically, you're out of order if you stand up and say, "I don't know." Because the idea is either for or against. And the idea is to get to a crunch point where people have to make up their mind. And then the other way you could not be part of that is to stay. And that's actually not a problem, because you're not actually... So part of, I think, the gift of the church and faith communities and the fact that we enter into dialogue with one another, with faith community councils and... And in Queensland particularly, it's a real gift. The level of trust between faith communities is fantastic. We are actually modelling to a society that expects us to be tribal and part of that and divided. But, you know, we can stand side by side, say, the refugee rally. Jew, Muslim, Buddhists, all say obviously wrong, without having to get to the technicalities of whether, you know, you're a heretic because you don't believe in the Trinity. That's it. We don't have to get down to that level of... We actually let our common humanity enter into a dialogical space and model something that is actually about originalist humanity.
It does bring to another question, all three of you. Gail, Swami, extensive experience in interfaith dialogue. So what are some of the principles and practices from interfaith dialogue that have been worked through for many decades? Do you think of our broader society about how to open up those spaces?
Well, obviously, if you talk to one another, you get to know one another. And then by getting to know one another, you have an understanding that you didn't have before, and you have a respect for people that you didn't have before, and you learn. And it's a very simple thing, and it's so simple that I can't believe people don't appreciate it. And yesterday, I was catching up with a lady in her 80s. She hands up a women's group, and she was saying to me, "Oh, some of the women were saying, 'What's with that Gail? Why is she doing interfaith work?'" And I was shocked. And, you know, "What's she got to do with interfaith?" And still today, people have this attitude that you can just remain in your little box and life will go on. Whereas those of us involved in interfaith can see such an enormous value in speaking to one another and witnessing each other's ways of faith. You know, we have a programme in QFCC before COVID where we were visiting places of worship, not for anything special, no special circumstances, just an ordinary worship day, so that we could just go along and just see how other faiths conduct their worship. And it's been really popular. We'll do it again once COVID finishes. Because it just gives you a broader understanding of the people around you. And surely by doing that, you are breaking down all these massive walls of misunderstanding. I know with Jewish people, that has been centuries long. People haven't understood what a Jew is about, what they do. You know, they believe all the nonsense and really evil stuff that's been put out there about Jewish people, simply because basically we were fairly marginalised and closed off. So of course people are suspicious. But by getting to know one another through interfaith, we are strengthening the Queensland community. I have absolutely no doubt about that. We are all volunteers, and I think that we are doing so much in just strengthening the general Queensland community. It's valuable, it's really valuable. And it's just by getting to know each other and learning to respect one another and finding out things and being able to ask each other questions that we wouldn't be able to ask under normal conditions. So it's just getting to know one another. We all have children, most of us have children, and I'm sure we all do this sort of thing so that our children will inherit a better world.
I agree with whatever Gail has said. I will just give you an example. I had once invited a religious leader to our centre to officiate in a programme. And he had placed so many of the conditions before coming. Said, "You should not expect me to bow down here in the shrine. You should not expect me to talk about any other religion," so on and so forth. But once he came and he started mingling with the others, his whole attitude towards religion, the other religions, changed. So this just shows that if you are confined to a small space and you put blinkers on your eyes, then you're the loser. That is why this forum of us all coming together is so very important.
Absolutely. Relations? And we have here in the room, and not many people, well, appropriate amount of physically distanced people. I'd like to open up to some questions or discussion. Please, very, very welcome as a part of this dialogue. So the comment is about definitions of God and how that can often be an obstacle for people to dismiss faith or not be able to engage each other. Does any of the panellists have any comments to speak to this? I mean, you do often hear, it does make me think, in this comment, people will often say, "Well, that's not the God I believe." You know, to ask the person, "Well, God is this angry vengeful." And then the retort will often be, "That's... I don't believe..." this angry vengeful, and then the retort will often be, that's, I don't believe in that God either, right? But sometimes the distance between what we mean by God and what another person assumes is, can be quite great. Don't know.
I guess it's a reflection of where our culture has come from and that we have objectified God and therefore want to define God. And certainly in the Western tradition, there's been a really tight describing of God and we actually, you know, we've been, not only content with distancing other people's ideas of God, we're actually, we're having really intense fights and burning one another on the basis of our different views on God. And I think that's where we really need to explore what religion is. And that's why I was a little touched by what you said earlier about being integrated and the spirituality of religion, I want, and just like science and technology, they are interrelated. And the thing that I'm finding really moving and hopeful is that, certainly I'm seeing more people who are being moved by experience and drawn to a religious path because of experience rather than because they're convinced by some sort of doctrine or definition of God. So they've had something, they've had an encounter with something they cannot name, and certainly cannot find, and they want to make sense of it. That's what the majority of seekers who come to us are desiring, is to make sense of without knocking down something that they have felt happening within them. And so when we get back to God being an experience or a verb or rather than an object, then I think a lot of that definitional stuff is going to fall away because we realise that all of the definitional stuff was really an attempt to describe something that had started as an experience. And certainly in our tradition, it's, you know, the resurrection for that, for me, is that sort of thing. It's actually an encounter, it's not, it's not something that needs to be described. And that's where story and metaphor become, are restored as the tools they always were, but we've actually tried to turn them into something scientific. We tried to work out what the body, what did the resurrected body look like? And what, you know, if you gave the Pope what would it do, it would sort of think. Whereas, you know, the way I read, say, our resurrection narratives, they are four groups of people trying to work out a way of describing, what the heck was that? We weren't expecting that. We had an encounter we didn't expect. Here's our best attempt to describe it in narrative form, rather than defining it. I think definition is our enemy.
Swami, I'm just bouncing off that question. The Hindu faith is the fastest growing faith here in Brisbane, according to the most recent census data. Do you think in part, some of that is a sense that what the Hindu faith allows is a much rumier conception of the divine than perhaps has been portrayed by monotheistic faiths, certainly in modernity? And obviously, the monotheistic faiths have this negative mysterious tradition, but do you think that...
Yes, that's true. Because Hinduism very firmly believes that religion is not doctrines or dogmas or temples or places of worship. It is that direct relationship of the individual being with the maker. And hence, there is no via media, there is no churchianity in between, if I can use the term. There is no temple in between us. One can be religious, one can be spiritual and perform whatever worship they want to perform at their home and yet be highly spiritual. Therefore, there is that freedom of approach to the divine. That is why probably it attracts a number of people.
Any other, another question? So the question's about, are there ways and what might those ways be of combating the adversarial nature of public discourse? And I mean, there's lots to talk about lack of civility these days. What are the tools that would help us to the dialogical approaches that you've all spoken about?
People always resent talking down upon them. That's what was done by religion and also by politics. It is now time for us to kneel down and approach the receiver. So in that way, it is the honourous responsibility of all the religious leaders to come down to the level of the listener and then to talk to them and then guide them through our faith. That's what I believe we should do.
I think, I tend to think that most people's experience with religion is from their childhood. And if they've had, if they've gone to a religious school or had a, you know, a net sort of experience or even a negative experience, then that carries that through to adulthood. I don't, I don't know if people really want to talk about religion. I really don't, you know, being really honest here. I don't think they want to go there. I don't think the vast majority of people see a religion or a faith as necessary, unfortunately. And they're the ones, well, in my opinion, they're missing out. But they don't see it as necessary to conducting their lives. And that's probably where we've all failed. And in the Jewish tradition, we sort of have it also a little bit harder because we find that our younger kids are marrying, what the term, marrying out, it's not meant to be an offensive term, but by marrying out, they are moving away from the Jewish tradition. If you're, if you've got daughters in Orthodox Judaism, your grandchildren will be Jewish no matter who they marry. But if you have sons and the wives they choose aren't Jewish, then technically in Orthodox Judaism, they're not Jewish anymore. And we were listening to a speaker last year and he said, how do you define if you're Jewish, if your grandchildren are Jewish? And that really hit home to a lot of us, particularly in Brisbane, which is a very small Jewish community, therefore full of people. If they're going to marry within the faith, it's small, so they tend to move away, which diminishes our congregation and then, you know, makes it even harder for the few that live behind. So, yeah, it's a, it's a little bit harder in Judaism, unless of course, which is what we're trying to do in our, in our synagogue, is we're trying to be more inclusive, we're trying to push our role into being more welcoming to those who haven't converted or, you know, those who've got partners who are of the faith. Because we like to be inclusive, the general congregation wants to be inclusive. Yeah, but sometimes we hit some loopholes.
My experience is that we can only attend to ourselves, so it's about developing little islands of dialogue and seeing who else we can invite into that. But I think one of the things we still tend to work out and try to decide is how we're going to influence the culture. So we're still, we've got this idea we're going to store in the public square, we're just going to find the next tricky way of doing it. But if we can create places where people can belong and feel safe and become who they feel like called to be and places of inclusivity and safety, then that becomes an attractor. And that's, you know, in terms of our tradition, that's how the early church worked. The early church looked at this community and worked out what needed to be done and just went out and did it, and that became the attractor. So it wasn't about proselytizing so much as doing stuff. So certainly the positive, the positive things I hear about the church, or when the church actually stands up and does what people expect the church to do. So a few years ago, when we did the sanctuary thing in the cathedral, I got buckets of emails from people who, and it was sort of like a forum, almost like a forum weather, but it wasn't a forum weather. And it was along the lines of, I'm not a Christian, I'll never be a Christian, but it's really good to see the church doing what the church should do. So there was a sense of positivity that, you know, people expect the church really to be looking after the poor and a voice for the poor. And so if we get on and do that sort of thing, then people will be attracted to us. And so on that sanctuary thing was unfolding, within four days, we had a thousand people in the cathedral, so we stand with what this place stands for. We dream of God being, which is that sort of reality. And so it's, it's really about being true to the vocation and not worrying about the other stuff. So much of what we worry about is about how will we grow, how will we survive, how will we retain our influence? Whereas, you know, the night we had that sanctuary vigil, I really expected that it would be me and a couple of other really radical thinkers. And we had got one small box of candles with this candle running, so I remember going to have, and we thought if we get 50 or 60 people, it would be, it would be lovely. And then I had Virges, our assistant, kind of running off getting box after box after box after candle, lots of candles. It was a thousand people. And we didn't do it to get a thousand people there, and we did it because we wanted to stand as solidarity with a bunch of people who were about to be deported from Australia. Fully expecting that it would fail.
I think it's time for one or two more questions. Yes, Rodney?
So following on from that, what do you feel the, maybe the missed opportunities or the valuable opportunities for finding common ground in the public square? Finding that common experience, the common interest can maybe awaken into possibilities of favour, or you can just have an understanding of favour, you talked about having understanding and all of this. Do you have any sense of, you know, whether it's things to do with values, for instance? Young people have a very keen sense of unjust or just treatment. Maybe as you get older, you could, what opportunities are valuable and lost?
So the question is about some of the opportunities that have been lost in just meeting society at large and finding common ground and around some of the issues and values where different faith groups might be able to meet with the broader Australian public.
The ripest issue is climate change. And the thing that's encouraging me about faith communities at the moment is the number of faith communities that have switched on about looking after the planet. Don't call it climate change if you like, but the number of faith communities that have switched on about looking after the planet is incredibly energising. I think that's the opportunity that we are called to grasp in the present. And for our tradition, it's basically just understanding that the concept of neighbour has developed to the sense that it includes every creature on the planet. But I can see an amazing synergy of religious groups. In fact, I think we are the people who will give it a spirit and a soul, the people who can stop it becoming a violent practice. So if we bring our spirituality of, and we do it in a non-violent way, I think we can energise the move to save the planet in, and I think if we don't, I suspect we move the point much farther to society. I think it's one of the things we can really give up in the present.
The other is the gender issue, which has, which has come up quite strongly nowadays. And the youth are very passionate about those gender issues. And it is high time that religious leaders come together and they formulate their strategies of responding to that. Hinduism especially believes that every soul is potentially divine. So as such, there is no gender to the soul. And therefore, there is no distinction between man or woman or the neutral gender or whatever it is. Therefore, such messages must probably be broadcast.
Similarly, in Judaism, the name for God is Hashem, so it's not, it's neither male nor female, it has no gender, but tell that to the patriarchs in Judaism. Other issues that I think, another issue I think that is very important is people don't acknowledge, generally, society does not acknowledge the good work done by faith groups, the hospitals, the domestic violence work, the work with children who are marginalized. Enormous work is done by church-based groups, providing care for the elderly and places for them to live, et cetera. Our society would be a lot more taxed, higher taxed, without the work done by the faith-based groups. So I don't think, so I don't think when people are critical of religions or faith, I don't think they stop to think really about the work that is done by ordinary people every day in keeping our society moving and turning over and looking after those who are marginalized. All the food trucks and things like that. It's enormous, the work that goes on in our society, by faith-based groups, not by any other groups, by faith-based groups. And that really needs to get pushed, so maybe the religions, the religious groups need to advertise that more. And then people will realise how indebted they are to the faith-based groups. And also, apart from climate change, Peter, the nuclear disarmament thing is coming up again, and there's been a huge response by faith-based groups to...
It's time for one more question.
Even that, when the media are asked for a soundbite on, from a religious group, they tend to go to the Australian Christian lobby or to someone who doesn't give them a nuanced response. You know, we're talking about bringing out treasures old and new and knowing that we have some gifts, and I've heard that from everyone here, we know that we have some gifts to bring into the public square. We know that there are some things that people don't know that they don't know, but it's very difficult to communicate that. So I guess just if you could communicate one thing, I'm just like each of the speakers, if you could communicate one thing out into the public square from your own tradition and you only hear it, what would you want to communicate?
This is a great question, a great final question, Sue. It's almost like I teed that up. So given that the media often gets a very monolithic soundbite from an exclusive small part of any tradition, if each of you could communicate one thing to the media in Australia today about your faith, or speaking into public life, what would that be?
Well, that's enormous.
Two-seconds thought, please.
Going back, I mean, Judaism is heading towards 4,000 years in age, so there's a lot of material there. Going back to basics, it's what Peter touched on before, it's the, it's the golden rule. If we all lived or tried to live by that golden rule of treating each other with the respect that we feel we deserve or not doing any harm to people, I think our world would be, I mean, it affects everything, it affects every facet of life if you apply that rule.
I think the thing I would want to inject into is that the idea of the individual is a lie.
Yep.
Let's talk.
So true. Religion is not mere dogmas, but it is the search for the soul that is within ourselves. but it is the search for the soul that is within ourselves. And that divinity is within every one of us. We are only searching for it outside. Let us start searching inside.
The 13th century philosopher Meister Eckhart said this, theologians may argue, but the mystics of the world all speak the same language. What a pleasure it has been to share in this space and our words. Thank you very much to our audience and especially thank you to our guests. Good night.
Good night.